Is it? Well, here we go. It is indeed seven o'clock. So I would like to welcome everybody here to the City Commission Chambers here in City Hall on this lovely Michigan evening and officially call the business meeting of the Kalamazoo City Commission to order for Monday, July 1st, 2024. And our first order of business is roll call. Clerk Borling.
Commissioner Cooney.
Present.
Commissioner Decker. Commissioner Hoffman.
Present.
Commissioner Pradel.
Present.
Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Here. Thank you, Clerk Borling. May I please have a motion to excuse Commissioner Decker?
So long.
Motion made by Commissioner Hoffman.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Pradel. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. All right, thank you so much. So fellow commissioners, it's good to see you. We had a very helpful and edifying, I thought, committee of the whole meeting about all things floodplain in the city of Kalamazoo. I would recommend anyone who's interested in the least little way to go look that up. It was very, very helpful presentation by our own Director Baker. So for our opening ceremony this evening, we are honored to have Padip Sugdeo here to provide an invocation, and I know you've been here before, so you know what the, how this goes. And then I will ask people to stand for the invocation and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Yes, sir.
Hare Om. Hare Om. Namaste. Which means I bow to the deity. Thank you, Mayor Anderson, for this opportunity to do the invocation at this meeting. This is my second time this year to do so, and I do really greatly appreciate it. As is our Hindu tradition, I will begin my invocation with a prayer to Lord Ganapati, the elephant-faced god with a very large torso. (Singing) Vakratunda Mahakaya, Surya Koti Samaprabha, Nirvignan Kurume Deva, Sarvakar Yeshu Sarvada. Oh God, with a curved trunk, large body, and brilliant as millions of suns, please make all my undertakings always free of obstacles. Now for today's invocation, I have selected a piece invocation from Samaved, which is one of the four main scriptures of our religion. Apya Yantum Mangani, Vatpranas Chaksush Rtram, Matho Balaminriyani Chaservani, Sarvam Brahman Upanishadam, Maham Brahman Nirakuriyam, Maa Ma Brahman Nirakaroda Nirakaranam Astu Nirakaranam Estu, Tadatmaninirateya Upanishatsu Dharmastemahi Santu, Temahi Santu, Om Shanti Shanti Shantihi. May all my senses, speech, breath, eyes, ears grow ever stronger. The Upanishads describe Brahman, the universal spirit. May I never deny the existence of the universal spirit, and just as I may not deny the existence of the universal spirit, may the universal spirit not reject me either. May I become one with the universal spirit by assimilating the knowledge in the Upanishads. May I master all the virtues described in the Upanishads. Upanishad is essentially a dialogue between a preceptor and a disciple. The disciple asks a question, and the preceptor, depending upon the preparation of the disciple, will answer the question. Now, as I said here, may I master all the virtues described in the Upanishads. What are those virtues? They are, there are many different descriptions of those virtues, but just like another Upanishad says, there are four primary virtues, and they are Shraddha, which is faith, Bhakti, which is devotion, Dhyana, which is meditation, and Yoga. And Yoga really means Karma Yoga, which means selfless action for the greater good. Obviously, we have to work for our sustenance, but after our needs are met adequately, our work should always be for the greater good. It should be based on our Dharma, and Dharma is not religion in the narrow sense of the word in which it is usually translated. Dharma is your duty, based on your natural talents and character. And therefore, your duty may be different from my duty, and it will be different from somebody else's duty, but that is based on your natural talents and character. And we develop that natural talent and character by avoiding three main traits of our behavior, which are desire, anger, and greed. These three are actually named in our religions as three doors to hell. If we can avoid desire, anger, and greed, we are on the path of reaching salvation. So that is the invocation for today. As you can see, when it says that make my senses stronger, if you look at the current situation in the world, whether it's in Kalamazoo or in Ukraine or in some other hotspot in the world, we have to have the ability to understand the situation and to be able to find solutions to that situations that are really for the greater good, not for only a few people in that, in whatever part of the world. So I think this Shanti part, which is recited at the beginning of any conversation between the student and the teacher, is very significant for the situation that we find ourselves in the world today. I will conclude, as usual, with a prayer for the happiness of everyone. We Hindu consider Vasudha Eva Kutumbkam. The entire earth is a single family, and therefore naturally, we want everybody to be happy, everybody to be free of diseases, and everybody free of any sorrow that they might face in their life. Sarve Bhavantu Sukhinaham, Sarve Santuni Ramaya Ham, Sarve Bhadrane Pashyantu, Mahakaschit Dukkha Bhavet, Om Shanti Shanti Shantihi. Dhanyavada. Thank you very much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: one nation, unbound, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again, Mr. Sugdeo. I appreciate your presence this evening. Well, it's actually, we're having a rare moment here. We actually have a meeting with no proclamations. We've been having a number of proclamations for wonderful things we're recognizing, but we don't happen to have one on our agenda tonight. So we're going to move right on to C, which is adoption of the formal agenda. And commissioners, are there any items on the consent agenda you would like to see moved to the regular agenda? Thank you, Commissioner C. None. Is there anyone here in the chambers who would like to move an item from G, the consent agenda, to H, the regular agenda? All right, thank you so much. Seeing no changes. Next, we are on to Communications. Chief Operating Officer Lamb.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of just items for this evening. One, I wanted to announce that our summer cinema series started last Friday. They had a movie in the park at Spring Valley. There are two more opportunities this summer to catch a flick outdoors and enjoy this weather: July 26th at Phrase Park, and then August 30th at Crane Park. Activities start at 6:00, movies start at 7:00, and all the information about these events can be found on kazuparks.org. Also wanted to acknowledge, the next EPS, the next styrofoam collection is coming up on Saturday, July 13th. This is at the Mayor's Riverfront Park from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Again, if you want to make sure you know what you can bring, it's not just styrofoam, it's oral care products, it's electronics, it's paper shredding. All that information can be found on the city's website, kalamazu city dot org slash EPS. And I definitely want to give a shout out to all the volunteers that makes this possible. Sounds like the last collection, more than a truckload, was diverted from the landfill. And so I appreciate some of you on the dais, helping to champion this effort. I really appreciate the volunteers for making this possible and creating a really important service for our community. Lastly, oh, construction season. Want to continue to acknowledge that we understand this has been very rough. We have a lot of projects happening at a lot of, a lot at the same time. Everything seems to be kind of in our way, and I really want to continue to thank people for the patience that you've shown. We've got some really critical projects, both above ground, underground, that are happening that's going to make things better, but it's hard to see that we're going to get there. I want to acknowledge our city crews, our contractors, for trying to get things done as quickly as possible, but I also want to acknowledge that this is just a frustrating time. We'll get through it. On the city's website, on our front page, there's a construction updates area. You can click on it, you can search on the project that you're interested in, get the most updated information, you can sign up for updates. We certainly are also want to give a shout out to Communications and our teams for trying to stay on top of things, and we also appreciate you from the public when you let us know that there's a little bit more we need to do. So thanks again for your ongoing patience on that.
Thank you, COO Lamb. Appreciate that update. Now is the opportunity for public comments. Just a reminder, here are the public comment period is three minutes here at our business meeting. Please, when you come forward, give us your name, where you live in the city. This is also a reminder, this is an opportunity to make a comment for the commission. This is not an opportunity for us to engage in dialogue. So please take advantage of your three minutes. Come forward. Thank you.
Evening, everyone. In late 2023, Southwest Michigan Democratic Socialists of America launched a campaign advocating for the installation of new 24/7 public restrooms in downtown Kalamazoo. The campaign quickly gathered hundreds of signatures in support from residents, visitors, and business owners, all agreeing that this infrastructure was desperately needed. In January, the city announced that they were installing two 24/7 restrooms in the downtown area, one on the corner of St. John Place and Lowell Street, and another on South Street near St. Kalamazoo Mall. Over six months later, I'm here today to ask the city for an update on this project. The proposed sites are currently devoid of any activity indicating progress, and the restrooms are desperately needed as more people enjoy our public spaces during the summer months. I ask, what is the current situation of this project? When can residents and visitors expect to receive these new facilities? And is the city still committed to making our public spaces as accessible as possible? I hope that by the next meeting, the city will be able to answer these questions publicly and provide an update to this pressing issue. I also hope that our local media, shout out, follow up on their initial stories that they published after the announcement and provide some accountability for what currently looks like an empty promise. So thank you for your time. And since I got a little bit extra, I might as well dive into something that's a little bit pressing over the last week or so. Obviously, the Supreme Court has gone AWOL in the last couple of days, and one of the things they've done is they've changed the way that houselessness can be enforced by its communities. And I'm here just to ask the city that they outright ignore that decision and they continue enforcement, you know, as is, without escalating it any further than it is. I know that this body is technically nonpartisan, but I'm sure a lot of you identify as being liberals or, you know, left-leaning, and I really don't think it is in your values, your set of values, for you to use powers that have been given by an extremely far-right and illegitimate Supreme Court. So all I'm saying is, we've got people, we talk to people in the community, the community is actively listening, and if there is a change in enforcement, ultimately, it's going to come back here, and you guys are going to have to answer for it. So I ask that you be proactive about this. Make sure that things don't escalate. Make sure that our community is still welcoming to all people. And yeah, I just want to make sure, reiterate that. So please, an update would be great about the public restrooms, and no escalation on the houseless front would be wonderful as well, but, you know, maybe I'll be back. Who knows? Thank you. Enjoy your evening.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hello, City Commission. My name is Ryan Smith. I am a resident of the Edison neighborhood, and I am also with Southwest Michigan DSA, and we did want to just follow up on the bathrooms and want to know what the progresses are. During last Tuesday, there was a Q and A that was a panel of unhoused or previously unhoused individuals, and they brought up just having some dignity and not having to always ask to go to use the restroom, and businesses or even ministers, community, and the mission, they get denied everywhere. So public bathrooms are a major thing that needs to be addressed, and I just hope that there's a little bit of urgency on it. And also too, like during that, we had three commissioners show up to that Q and A, and I just want to let y'all know, I really appreciate y'all showing up there, and I appreciate you, Don Cooney, for helping facilitate it and get it started. I just really want to hope that everything was heard in that Q and A. One guy, Terry, mentioned that every time, you know, just imagine planting a flower in the ground and having it constantly uprooted is no way for it to grow, and the way that we treat our unhoused people here in Kalamazoo is that way. We don't want to escalate it anymore, you know, the Supreme Court decision and all, but, you know, I'm hoping that we can de-escalate it and actually try to find ways to solve the problem instead of keep pushing them out, further out of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, I'm Kay. I just want to say about the flooding information, that was a lot of information, but I think one important thing that was missing from there is deforestation. The amount of, he talked about how the runoff had increased over the decades, and that's because we've gotten rid of a lot of mature spaces, and I think that's very notable with 209 East Stockbridge, where they want to build Hawthorne Park. That is a natural water basin. So the community there is going to get flooded out before there's a solution, and I want to urge you all to consider that, especially Anderson, you're very involved with the LIV Foundation and those projects. I want you to be very conscious about what this means for our climate crisis and really what it means for the communities, right? When they redid the juvenile home on Gold Road, and they took out that big grove of trees, all of that community pass review was, is continuously being flooded out because of those mature trees being taken out. So those are the consequences of building, of taking out the space right there is the last green space for miles. I want you all to go on your Google Maps, Google 209 East Stockbridge, and zoom in and zoom out and see that that's the only green space left in that area for miles and miles. So the community is already in, already being flooded, and they've already, you know, Tina comes here and talks all the time about the flooding issues, so I want to urge you all to not approve any of those projects. There needs to be an environmental impact, a study that has not been done, and there's surveyors that go out there, and, you know, they bother, they bother the community there because they're, they're, we need to really think about the bigger picture. The Hawthorne Park, even though it seems like a good idea, it gives us the bare minimum of affordable housing, and if it has a few apartments that have wraparound services, it is not enough to address the housing crisis. And when we talk about the AMI, the way the AMI is set up, it was set in these chambers, and I say it every single time, the 60% to 80% AMI absorb that affordable housing, so there's no options for the 0% to 30% or 40% that is at the bottom. That, that housing development is not good for our environment. I urge you all to reconsider, and also, please, please, we, this is one of three cities in Kalamazoo that already criminalizes homelessness. We need to really keep an eye on the escalation that is going to happen after this, this whole decision that was made by our government, like ridiculous. I want you all to urge, Laura Lamb was one of the significant players, and she sent an email about having, threading the needle, right? Threading the needle with the encampments that get set up to make sure that there's not three or more, three or more people building their camps. We need, we need answers. We are in a housing crisis, and Kalamazoo is not doing anything that is like radical or even like progressive to really address that, and so we need to be more conscious about the houses community and how they're being treated.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Chief. I'm Angelique Camfield. I'm here not to talk about issues that face the city, but for our next Ninth Circuit Court judge for the county. I have been a practicing attorney for 27 years. Fifteen of those years were as a prosecutor, nine of those years were as a public defender, and I am still doing defense work in my private practice, which also entails family law. Chief Judge Jagir has indicated that this new seat is going to be a, probably a 99% felony criminal docket for this judge, and I'm here to tell you that of the three candidates, I am the only individual that is qualified to take that position. At this point, I have done literally thousands of hearings and hundreds of trials in front of the bench and a jury. I have handled single-handedly a prosecution case, which was very difficult. It involved three minors sexually assaulting two younger children of ages five and six. I prosecuted that case for five days by myself against three individual defense attorneys. Four each responded in that matter. During that trial, I presented expert witnesses, both as to the delayed disclosures of the children, as well as DNA evidence, and then I also cross-examined the defense's DNA expert that was presented to refute my evidence. Those three respondents were convicted. I am here to do a difficult job. Judges should not have party influence. Judges should not have public opinion influence, frankly, nor personal belief influence. Judges are here to interpret the law and to apply it to the facts of the case and circumstances before them. I have the experience to do so. I'm asking for your support in that regard. I have done both sides of criminal law. I know how to rule fairly and impartially, and to hear the cases to allow the litigants, the defendants, as well as the victims and survivors to have a voice in my courtroom. I intend to run it efficiently, fairly, and courteously for anyone that appears before me. But I also know that we have a difficult time now with our caseload being behind as far as the trials going forward. I will grant adjournments when they may be absolutely necessary, but we also need to keep our cases going. People need to have adjudication on the crimes against them, and voices need to be heard for survivors of crime. I intend to institute...
Thank you so much. Next, please.
Hi, it's me again. Thank you, Cooney, for speaking up. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Perez. Thank you, Ms. Hess. And thank you, James, for explaining about the flooding. I hope you guys do something to help, but Joanna is right. We need to save natural spaces because they help, and the one that she's talking about is the only one left in my whole entire neighborhood. I have a picture of an owl, got a baby owl that lives here now. We have a lot of bats, we have a lot of wildlife that lives there. And I'm going to go back to my speech. I live on Lake Street, I live in the low-line floodplain area, which is also the poor neighborhood, so my concerns that resources for flooding will be used around the event center and for the known flood, low-income areas like mine, South Town, Portage Creek, Cross Town Ponds, where we flood all the time. This happens every time we flood in the poor neighborhoods. The low-income homeowners that have to work two to three jobs just to survive flooding. We are the city of Kalamazoo, not downtown of Kalamazoo. The poor neighborhoods deserve dry streets too, as much as the wealthy downtown. I have came here for seven years. For seven years, I have repeatedly tried to save this natural green space. I'm like Joanna, you can build at the old DHS building, you can put as many apartments there as you want. All I ask is, please, leave this little natural green space. It helps us more than you would ever know. The issues are saving natural spaces, and I have watched as funds streamed away from poor neighborhoods like mine and resources as they've spent, and watch resources as they are spent over the line in wealthy areas like downtown. I've seen a lot of wasted money. If there's any integrity, please, you guys, help us with the flooding first before you do an area that really doesn't flood, like Arcadia Creek. South Town neighborhood, we flood all the time. We would like to enjoy the rain too. We don't want to worry when it rains, oh Lord, where am I going to go? Whose house am I going to go stay at? Because I get trapped and I can't get out, so I can't get to work, and I have to work because how am I going to replace my furnace every four years? How am I going to replace my water heater? And my basement is waterproofed, but it's been years ago, so it really needs to be done again, but now it's very expensive to do it. I do have two sub pumps that run nonstop, winter and summer, from the groundwater because it's so high around there, and any more you build there and any more water you put there is going to make us flood more. We need to save what natural spaces we have left. They're beautiful. Have you seen Portage? You seen the Sally Flats? Have you seen how horrible it looks with no trees in that whole neighborhood? How hot it is?
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Good evening. My name is Scott Kiesling, and I'm with George Pacific in Atlanta, Georgia, and I am the remediation project manager that's been in charge of cleaning up the Kalamazoo River in cooperation with the United States Environmental Protection Agency related to the PCBs that are in the river. We recently finished work in the Verburg Park-Patterson Street area, and it's been a very good relationship working with the city and the Parks Department, and I would like to just publicly read in a letter of our appreciation. And I would like to just publicly read in a letter of our appreciation. As you're aware, for the past several years, George Pacific, under oversight of the Environmental Protection Agency, has been working to remove PCBs from Verburg Park Pond and sediment within the Kalamazoo River. Our work necessitated the closure of Verburg Park and suspension of access to a portion of the Kalamazoo River Valley Trail. With that work now complete, George Pacific would like to express its sincere thanks to the City Manager's Office, the City Commission, and the many departments that helped ensure the success of this project. We would specifically like to thank the Kalamazoo Parks and Recreation Department, the Kalamazoo Department of Public Safety for their invaluable assistance. The project would also not have been possible without the collaboration of Graphic Packaging Incorporated, as much of this work was adjacent to their Pitcher Street operation. They have been a big supporter of this environmental remediation project from the beginning and have allowed us to complete the project sooner and avoid the need to keep Verburg Park closed longer. Their efforts reflect a commitment to improving Kalamazoo's public spaces. Of course, George Pacific would also like to express its thanks to the citizens of Kalamazoo for their patience and cooperations during this project. We know how important these parks are and the trails are to area residents. While work on the full Kalamazoo River project continues to move forward, we are grateful to everyone who has helped make this particular project a success. And I can leave a copy of my letter.
Thank you. Is there anyone? Yes, next, please. Is there anyone else? Yes.
I'm here tonight because I have not received any responses from the people that should be taking care of this problem, mainly Pete Eldridge and...
Just make sure you're close to the microphone so we can hear you. Thank you.
Sorry. The zoning, head of zoning, Pete Eldridge, the deputy director, Christina Anderson, and I've even emailed you, Mr. Mayor. I have a building going in next door, commercial building, which everything else is residential. This is eleven thirty-five Conan Street. The gentleman there has absolutely no place for anybody to park. There's three spots in front of the building, which are city parking on the street. Other than that, he has nothing. So what Pete suggests that we just let him park up and down in front of our houses when there is actually a code and a requirement for this. But Mr. Eldridge doesn't seem to think he has to follow any codes. There is, let's see, Chapter Three, four point three oh three, filed under Commercial Parking Lot. Four parking spaces for every thousand feet of building. He has fifty-three hundred square feet, so four times big as five would be twenty parking spaces. The default parking requirement, one space per five hundred square feet of floor area, so fifty-three hundred feet is ten spaces. So anywhere, yeah, look, he is not following the code and does not think that he has to. Another thing he thinks he doesn't have to is a follow-up to or put handicapped entrance in that is ADA compliant. He thinks he is going to put it at the end of the building that is a shared driveway, and that is not allowed per the Highway Act of, I'm sorry, Highway Act of nineteen eighty. Cannot block a shared driveway, and if he does, he's breaking the law. So he can't have his handicap access down there because there's only two feet beyond the building that he owns. And in order for it to be handicapped accessible, he has to have ninety degrees if a wheelchair is in there and has to do any turning around. They have to be able to do that. They have to be able to get in there if they're on crutches, a wheelchair, or a handicap scooter, which that would never be possible. Mr. Eldridge knows this. Mr. Eldridge doesn't care. I think he believes he's the mayor and can do whatever he wants to do. And I do not appreciate it. It's very frustrating that he doesn't do his job and nobody's making him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fighting the bifocals. Denial. I'm Kelly Doyle, and I'm at two two zero Buchanan Avenue, and I came to speak on the discussion of adding more paid parking downtown through meters. I want to first thank COO Laura Lamb for acknowledging the constant change that we're seeing with construction because, yeah, it sucks. So thank you for at least acknowledging that. I, like so many, are frustrated with the constant set of changes, and I've read the articles that you have finance deadlines. I run a nonprofit. I totally get it. And what I'm really worried about is for the businesses. I'm not a business owner, but I'm here to speak to say, I'm worried about the businesses. I'm a customer. I love downtown. And I've sat and watched Portage Road over by the airport have years of construction, and how many places have closed down over there? Now, I know you're not in charge of Portage, so I'm not, I'm just showing you example. So, you know, the, it seems like there's a lot of independent choices being made that are collectively creating a problem. You know, if it's, we're doing bike lanes, then we're doing consumers' energy, and then it's water and this and that. And so it's so much. And now we're talking about meters downtown. I know that employees are parking downtown and probably taking up some of those spots, so meters would change that. But does that cause another problem? Does that cause a place for employees not to be able to park? I would like to see the commission be, or, you know, the, I guess, its city leadership to be more creative in how they respond to this. What are you going to do to get people to increase attending downtown in these areas now? Not six to twelve years from now, not two years from now, now, so that they're not losing out on their business. Asking a business to have low sales for four to six months is a hardship. And we hear about Victorian Bakery. We know of places downtown. So I'm just going to anonymously quote one long-term business owner who said, I'm in a restrained panic about the changes. I think in six to eight years, it will be amazing navigating through downtown. There just won't be much character left to downtown to visit. And we haven't even started the two-way construction yet. Eek. So that's what I wanted to raise. I'm not telling you to vote a certain way. I'm just hoping you have more conversations on how to bring people downtown, how to be bring people to these businesses while they're being affected by construction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jeff Messer, city resident. I would like to echo the remarks of Ryan Smith and his friend from the Democratic Socialists of America. I would also like an update on the city's plans for additional public restrooms downtown. As you know, we only have one. It's located on East Water Street. As they said earlier this year, it was announced that there'd be two more going in. The last that I remember hearing was that those had not been budgeted by the City Commission yet, and there was supposed to be a mid-year amendment coming to those. So I'm hoping that during Commissioner comments, Dr. Cooney or Chris can can ask staff, where are we on on those plans? It was, in fact, the fact that one point six five million in COVID relief was being used for the festival site, but there were no additional Portland Loups was that was the thing that got me riled up about that. How can you be renovating the festival site when there's no additional bathrooms? So that's all been budgeted, the, you know, that's part of the five million dollar Phase One renovation of the festival site. But those new bathrooms are nowhere in sight. So please, at the Commissioner's comments at the end of the meeting, continue watching till the end of the meeting. The Commissioners do respond. You just got to wait. I see the Commissioners are very good about taking notes. You just got to stick around till the end of the meeting. For those advocates there regarding downtown issues, there is one other board that you may want to advocate at. That is the Downtown Development Authority. They regularly hold their meetings on the third Monday of every month at three PM at, it's across from Kalamazoo Valley Museum, that's where the Community Planning and Development Department is currently located. Mayor Anderson is a board member, is a member of the DDA DGA. So third Monday of every month, that's the regularly scheduled meetings, three PM, DDA DGA, to something Hundred Block, North Rose Street, and you can advocate there. But please do that. Also, I will echo COO Lamb and soon-to-be Vice Mayor Hess. This two weeks, two Saturdays from now is the quarterly polystyrene foam recycling program. Please bring this material clean and dry, drop it off. This stuff doesn't go in your regular recycling because you can break this stuff in your hand if it goes through the recycling sorting center, it gets caught machinery. That's also why you do not put plastic bags in your recycling. It gets caught up in the machinery, and then every few hours, they got to shut down the whole thing and remove those bags. So only put in your curbside recycling things that are rigid, not things that that break down. Three other things you can recycle there, electronics, consumer electronics, although you have to pay ten dollars for computer monitors and TVs. You can bring, Colgate is sponsoring dental products recycling, used dental products, toothbrushes and stuff, and also paper shredding. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in the chambers? Yes, please.
Hi, this is a slight continuation of hers. Other things that have come up are buildings, they're only permitted for only a few months to be boarded up. This location, the one has been boarded up for five and a half years. This was a year and a half prior to the purchase of it. It's only supposed to be for a few months, and then they're supposed to be opened back up. Again, another one's the duration and expiration of permits. They're only granted for two extensions, thirty days each. After that, they're supposed to be going through with the Construction Board of Appeals in order to any more extensions on it. This gentleman's had way too many, or it's been overlooked. There are many things we have observed. He has not had two contractors come in and actually work on the building. Everything else, he gets people that are from down here in the homeless area, and they come in along with him. So we really don't know how well constructed this is. Be nice if Mr. Eldridge or somebody, a building inspector, would actually come through and look, spend time instead of standing out in front, talking with him. Fifteen, twenty minutes, they take off, never enter the building. This we observe because it's only twelve feet difference property line-wise. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the chambers that would like to take advantage of this public comment, period? So I want to thank everybody who took the time, made the effort to come down here. We appreciate it very much. And I know with this particular issues, we definitely take note of those issues, and we'll make sure that there's follow-up. We are now down to the consent agenda, G, COO Lamb.
Thank you, Mayor. Item one, approval of a sole-source purchase of DS nine fifty High Speed Ballot Scanner from Election Systems and Software in the amount of one hundred and forty thousand five hundred and seventy-five. Two, approval of a professional service agreement with GHD for environmental consulting services at the Cork Street Landfill in the amount of one hundred and forty-five thousand seven hundred and seventy-five. Three, approval of a contract extension with Rathco Safety Supply for the care, maintenance, replacement, and installation of regulatory warning and informational signage and related items in the amount of one hundred and eighty-two thousand two hundred and seventy-five. Four, approval of a professional service agreement with Prana Newhoff for the Knollwood Pipeline Project funded through the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund in the amount of two hundred and four thousand. Five, approval of a professional service agreement with Prana Newhoff for the Edison Non-Copper Service Replacement Project funded through the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund in the amount of five hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Six, approval of a contract supplemental change order, Xylem Vu Incorporated, for both the next phase and expansion of the existing phase of the city sanitary collections decision support and monitoring system in the amount of five hundred and thirty-six thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars forty-six cents. Approval of a contract with Consumers Concrete for ready-mixed concrete in the amount of five hundred and fifty-eight thousand fifty dollars. Approval of a professional service agreement with Tetra Tech Incorporated for the Central Water Treatment Plant Upgrades Project in the amount of eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Adoption of a resolution to approve a state trunk line maintenance contract with the Michigan Department of Transportation and to designate James J. Baker, P.E., as the state trunk line maintenance contract administrator for the city of Kalamazoo. Ten, adoption of a Michigan Liquor Control Commission resolution to correct Resolution twenty-four twenty-two and recommend approval of an application from the Board of Trustees of Western Michigan University for a Class C liquor license to be located at ten seventy Arcadia Loop with a banquet permit to be located at thirteen forty-one Theater Drive. Eleven, adoption of a resolution recognizing Red Arrow Riders Motorcycle Association as a nonprofit organization operating the community for the purpose of obtaining a charitable gaming license. Twelve, adoption of a resolution requesting a state disaster contingency fund grant for the city's response of the severe weather and tornado on May seventh, twenty twenty-four, and naming Brandy Janes as the city's authorized representative to sign documents, provide information related to the grant. Thirteen, approval of an easement within the North Pitcher Street right-of-way for an electrical duct bank to Graphic Packaging International. Fourteen, approval of a housing development grant in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars for gap financing to support the rehabilitation of affordable housing at twenty-two zero three South Berdick Street. And fifteen, approval of a purchase agreement with Douglas Alexander Neighbors for the purchase of seven thirty-one Pioneer Street and seven thirty-seven Pioneer Street. This item is postponed until July fifteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, COO Lamb. So Commissioners, the requested action is a motion to approve items one through fourteen and postpone item fifteen until July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and authorize the city manager to sign all related documents. Is there a motion? Motion made by Commissioner Cooney.
Second.
Supported by Commissioner Hoffman. Kirk Boiling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The consent agenda items are approved. Now we're on to H, the regular agenda, COO Lamb.
Item H one, approval of a contract with Fur Pal Construction USA LLC for the Knollwood Pipeline Project funded through the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund in the amount of three million two hundred and seventy-two thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
Thank you, COO Lamb. Is there a staff report on this item?
We do not have a staff report, but Director Baker is here to answer questions, should there be any.
Appreciate that. I know this is an item that we actually have talked about a couple of times, and I know Commissioner Pradel, you've asked questions in the past and made several comments on this. Commissioners, do you have questions that you would like to ask in advance of this one? Okay. Seen seen no questions from Commission. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this item? That's item H one. If so, please come to the podium, give us your name, whether you live in the city, and you'll have three minutes. Seen no one. The recommended action is a motion to approve. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Hess.
Second.
Supported by Commissioner Wilson. Any discussion, Commission? All right, seen none. This is a good thing. So I'm happy to see us doing it, and this is a little different approach. We've discussed this before. Rather than ripping them out, this is a relining procedure, which is a more, you know, efficient way financially to do this work, and it's work that needs to be done. So I'm happy to see that we're doing that. Kirk Boiling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The motion passes. Next on the agenda is item H two, COO Lamb.
Approval of a contract with SWT Excavating Incorporated for the Edison Non-Copper Service Line Replacement Project funded through the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund in the amount of fourteen million two hundred and fifty thousand ninety-seven dollars and one cent.
Thank you very much, COO Lamb. Well, this is consistent with this work we're doing across the city, getting, replacing our lead service lines. This is a big investment in that. Happy to see us doing it. I presume there's no separate report on this.
Exactly. Director Baker is again here, available to answer questions. If you want to ask him about that one cent, he'll be well happy to come up and give us the math.
All right. Any questions, commission? No, all right. Well, no questions from commission. Now's the opportunity for anybody here in the chambers to comment on this item. It's item H2. Seen no one. The recommended action is a motion to approve. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Hoffman.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Pradel. Any discussion? Seen none. Kirk Boiling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The motion passes. Next on the agenda is item H3.
First reading of an ordinance to amend the Kalamazoo City Code, Chapter 29, 5, Flood Plane Management. Do you have, Director Baker, as you mentioned, we had a lot of conversation at the five o'clock meeting. He's just gonna share a few brief comments and certainly could answer any questions you might have.
Appreciate that, COO Lamb and Director Baker. Welcome.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, COO Lamb, City Attorney, City Commissioners. I just want to provide a brief comment. We spent a lot of time on our earlier meeting talking about projects and sort of the how and why floods develop and how that all works together. This action that's proposed tonight is really just the background regulatory aspect of that. Flood planes have been drawn in Kalamazoo since flood planes have existed from a regulatory standpoint. These things are updated from time to time. They were last updated in 2010 and so this is just a kind of a parliamentary procedure of action that we go through as the city to recognize those FEMA flood plane maps that they put out. There's a number of other actions, including flood insurance, that folks can get when we pass this ordinance. There's also a lot of work that goes into building code and folks in the building department will be following these new flood insurance or rate maps and the FEMA flood planes. One thing I wanted to highlight is that we have a lot of ability for citizens to check out their own properties. So you can go to the city of Kalamazoo's GIS site and you can just Google it. I do that myself, just Google city Kalamazoo GIS, G-I-S, all capital letters, and that'll bring up your top hits. Go to the city Kalamazoo website, click on GIS. When you go to that screen, it's gonna open up like a map of the city, looks kind of like Google Earth. There's gonna be a tab up in the upper right-hand corner, looks like a bunch of folders stacked together. Those are called layers. You can click on those layers and it gives you a list of a bunch of different things to choose. Go down to flood planes and click that. You'll have the ability to click the legacy flood planes, which are the older ones, and then the new 2024 flood planes. So you can look at those independently. You can turn them both on at the same time and look where they don't line up and that would represent areas of change. We also, within that website in the flood feature, have a aerial photo from our record flood event that happened in 2018. You can turn on that. It's an image and it shows you the flood inundation over the same areas of the city. You can see how that compares to the 2024 flood plan as well. So some resources available for folks and we would encourage you, if you're a property owner or if you're a developer, to take a look at that GIS website and see where your property is or where a proposed property that you may wish to develop, where that is with respect to flood planes. So, thank you.
Thank you, Director Baker. Any questions from commission? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Seen none. Now's the opportunity for everybody here in the chambers to comment on this item. Just a reminder, this is a first reading of an ordinance. For an ordinance change, we have to come to two meetings, so there will be action that will actually occur on the ordinance itself at a subsequent meeting. Seen no one that wants to comment on it. The recommended action is a motion to offer for first reading. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Wilson.
Second.
Supported by Vice Mayor Hess. Discussion. Commissioner Pradel.
I know we use a lot of acronyms. Take a moment to make sure that we explain the acronyms we're using sometimes. So Director Baker shared those, but just kind of reemphasize. So FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency, is a federal agency that examined our area for, it looks like about a four-year period from 2019 to 2023. The FIRM acronym, F-I-R-M, Director Baker referenced this, but that's flood insurance rate map. And so that flood insurance rate map, that's part of the minutia of the ordinance that needs to be updated in our code of ordinances. I'm sorry, our city code, Chapter 29, 5. So just wanted to make sure to emphasize those acronyms for the public.
Thank you very much. GIS.
I am going to have to defer.
Sorry to catch you there.
No, you're catching me off guard, this is good. Does anybody else know?
Geographic Information System?
That sounds about right.
Thank you so much. All right. Appreciate that. Any other discussion? Kirk Boiling, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The motion passes. Next on the agenda is item H4, COO Lamb.
First reading of an ordinance to amend the sections within Kalamazoo City Code, Chapter 36, the traffic code, related to overnight parking, meter rates and operational hours of meters.
Is there a staff report on this?
Yes, I'd like to welcome City Planner Christina Anderson. She's gonna do a brief presentation and will certainly be able to answer any questions.
To welcome Christina Anderson.
Good meeting, good evening, Mayor Anderson and Commissioners. I am here for first reading, just like our last item. So introduction to changes to Chapter 36, the traffic code, specifically updates to support the downtown parking system. So I'm gonna talk first about some background. This is work that's been in the process for quite some time, since the 2025 master plan approval and some retail market studies that we've had in the past. I'm gonna talk specifically about the proposed changes to Chapter 36. I'm gonna talk about some projects that will occur in the near future after, after, if we approve these changes. And I'm gonna talk about some of the fiscal impacts behind the changes that are being proposed as well as some of the impacts to downtown. So kind of tying back to that why that we're gonna talk about first. So as I mentioned, this is not, not new work. There are things that take a while for us to move forward. This was parking changes and updates to the downtown parking system were very specifically called out in the Downtown Life chapter of the 2025 master plan. These changes came from a multiple day set of meetings with downtown businesses in conjunction with a retail market study group, Gibbs Planning Group, who really talked about the value of parking in, on a main street, on a downtown street and the need to think about the appropriate pricing, the appropriate timing for those meters, as well as the ability to turn them over to support new folks coming into the area. In 2019, the Downtown Kalamazoo Partnership initiated or had completed a strategic blueprint for downtown parking and that was the plan that the master plan called for. The point of this plan was to guide the policies, guide our actions to make sure that we're best supporting livability and economic development downtown. And the blueprint includes a lot of things that was included in your packet, things like reviewing meter location, pricing and timing, access management, thinking about driveways, because when you have driveways, you are taking away opportunities for on-street parking. Thinking about creating a more effective, accessible and functionally viable parking system. Remember that this is a system with assets that need to be managed and paid for and run. So we are balancing a lot of things in our parking system. There are a few changes that are before you this evening in Chapter 36 and then I'm gonna preview a resolution that we're gonna discuss at the next meeting. Resolutions are just a one-meeting discussion, but I want it included in this in case anyone had questions. There are, a couple of changes are being proposed to the Chapter 36 related to on-street parking. The first is allowing us to create a overnight parking permit system. This is something that we have heard about from a number of developers and residents in downtown. Many buildings have parking for a car, but not guest parking or not a second car. Some buildings don't have, if they're older, don't have any parking and so creating the opportunity to allow parking downtown on those streets that remain empty overnight with a permit system. We, as a general ordinance, the city says there's no parking on any street between 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM unless otherwise noted. And the traffic engineer has the ability to make decisions on where overnight parking is allowed. If you recall, in 2019, 2020, we redid all of the on-street parking in the Vine neighborhood and expanded where overnight parking was allowed and added more daytime parking. So we already have the ability to allow, staff already has the ability to, you know, consider streets and allow overnight parking. What we've not done before is a permit system. And so adding this change to the ordinance allows us to do that permit system. We have several neighborhoods who have expressed interest in a potential permit system in the future. Stewart Neighborhood being one, as the downtown grows and the arena comes into existence, to help manage the flow of arena visitors versus existing residents and guests of those residents and overnight parking. So there are other places that we would like to consider this system. We are just starting that in downtown. Another change that we are looking at in Chapter 36 to support some of the changes to the downtown parking system is to extend the time that meters may be in operation. Right now, meters end at 5:00 and do not run on Saturdays or Sundays. So we are, there are changes being proposed in the ordinance to allow the opportunity for meters to be run on Saturday and to allow the opportunity for meters to go to 8:00 PM. This does not mean that these changes are taking place now, nor does it mean that those changes are gonna take place in all parking locations. But we are updating the ordinance now. We know that we'd like to do some review work over the next couple, the next year or two to add new meters in downtown, to review parking regulations and we'd like to be able to think about, as recommended from our retail consultant and in the master plan, to think about parking based on demand and usage in order to have the most effective and efficient system. The final kind of major set of updates are just housekeeping updates. The ordinance has, it's been several years since the ordinance has been updated and parking administration and management has changed significantly with the advent of smartphones and apps and virtual parking and kiosk meters that cover a whole block. So there are a lot of new tools and we want to make sure that we are not limiting our ability to manage the system. So a lot of the changes that are being proposed relate to that. And then, of course, there are proposals to adjust parking rates, both in surface lots, in ramps, as well as on-street parking. Many of those are maximums that we'll go over and so they could be up to that amount. Again, just trying to give us the flexibility as we work out the changes to the parking system.
Wrong computer.
So, some things that will come out of those changes. First is this overnight parking permit system. Again, there are kind of three reasons why we're moving forward with this. We'd like to move forward with this program. The first is to accommodate the needs of existing downtown residents. And we have heard both from building owners as well as from residents that there's a need to have this opportunity. The second is to provide options for guests of downtown residents to park overnight. As I mentioned earlier, buildings, you may have a space for yourself, but rarely would you also have space, there's limited spaces for guests. So providing downtown residents with a place for their guests when they come in over the weekend overnight to park is something that we wanted to provide. And then finally, as we have new buildings come into downtown, spaces clearly at a premium. Parking is a very expensive element in construction and so if we can think about how to use those empty spaces on our streets overnight as a way to kind of help balance downtown development, we'd like to do that. So allowing on-street parking helps us and helps future development in downtown to be more effective and efficient with the land that they have. So we are in the process of developing the system. The ordinance does not lay out the exact system. Staff will develop that, but we wanted to give you an idea. There, you know, probably be two areas of pricing, you know, a higher price in the more center of the city and a lower price for overnight parking on the edge. These rates will be comparable to if you were to purchase, if you were to do overnight parking in our two ramps. So we're not trying to take away space, we're just trying to provide another opportunity. You know, there are residential units all over downtown, they may not be close to the ramp. Now, the ramp may provide, you know, there are benefits to ramp, even though it might be further away. You can stay longer into the day, whereas if you park overnight in an on-street parking space that has a meter, you have to feed that meter when it turns on in the morning. And so you have to make that choice. Are you gonna move your car in the morning and have it close and convenient? Or do you want to use the overnight parking in the ramp? So it's about choices. Adding parking meters on the mall. Again, this is something that we have been talking about for quite some time. The downtown, the spaces that exist on the mall currently are used not as efficiently as they could be. And we've heard this from a number of business owners, people park for a very long time. Often, it's contractors who are doing work in the area and so those spaces at certain times of the day are not available for turnover for the adjacent businesses. So we have long talked about how we could better regulate those spaces. Earlier this year, City Commission, we approved the purchase of some kiosk meters and we held off on installing them as we thought about rates and prices and those type of things. So this work is not necessarily tied to the approvals in the ordinance. We can still install meters on the mall. What we wouldn't be able to do is use them to, in a way that uses demand and supply as part of the pricing and timing. So thinking about the mall tends to be active later in the day, more so than the rest of downtown. So the mall, having the meters run a little bit later to 8:00 makes sense. Having the pricing be $2 an hour for our most high-demand spaces, also this is the location that you would do it in, it makes sense. And when you think about, if you take a look at the strategic blueprint, it thinks about like a gradation of parking prices and opportunities. So the highest demand spaces tend to be, have the shortest time limit and tend to be the most expensive. And then as you get further out, you can make other choices with your meters, longer times, less expensive. And of course, we have our parking ramps, our two public ramps, which last fall, we did 90 minutes free in those ramps. And that has been really well-used and is one of the reasons, I'll talk about, little about this in a minute, but it was never meant to be done by itself. The changes to the ramp were always meant to be tied to changes in on-street parking because that's how you balance the system fiscally. We gave 90 minutes free in the ramp. We need to think about how we balance the economics of the situation by reviewing and updating the on-street parking. So a little bit of a preview for the resolution, which we have to do separately for creating updated fees. These fees were created in conjunction with PCI. PCI is our newer, they've been in place since earlier this year, manager of the downtown parking system and working with them and our parking consultant to adjust rates in surface lots, again, adding the overnight parking permit fee into our system as well as looking at some maximums, including the on-street daily maximum rate of $2. Right now, it's $1.75 is our maximum. So let's talk about some of the impacts of this work. Good parking practice, thinks about turnover and thinking about demand and the right price and the right location. And so making these changes can help ensure that spaces become available, that residents who come downtown can make different choices based on, you know, where they are and their needs at that moment. Are they going to be there for a long time? Does the ramp make more sense? Is it a quick in-it-out, pay the meter? This also makes the system itself function better. And in the strategic blueprint, there are several notes about, again, kind of inconsistent metering, inconsistent regulations and rules and different times. And all of this is work to kind of make our whole system work a little bit better for our downtown businesses, as well as those that come to patronize them. Certainly, there's a livability aspect. We want to make sure that we're providing overnight parking as needed for downtown residents. Those spaces on-street are not being used overnight. They are available and we should think about them as an asset and not just kind of let them kind of lie fallow at night. And finally, and I apologize that there's a duplicate bullet on the slide. But the changes in the ramps, which we moved up in schedule because our meter work was moving a little slow, we did last November, prior to the holidays, kept them in place permanently. We're always intend to be tied with on-street updates for those meters, for those on-street parking spaces. And so it's taken us a little longer to get this organized. And so here we are today talking about it, but there certainly has been an imbalance in the books as more and more folks are turning to the ramps for those first 90 minutes free. And we want to make sure that we're making the system whole and making the appropriate changes on-street to balance that out. Next steps. So depending on how this discussion goes tonight, what other information is needed. We'll be back here on July 15th, seeking approval of the ordinance changes, as well as the resolution that lays out the new, the permit fees, as well as the meter changes. But looking forward, we already have the kiosk meters for the mall in hand. And we have been working with a group of downtown businesses and the Southwest Michigan, Southwest Michigan First Chamber to locate them and kind of come up with our plan for outreach and engagement for the installation of those, education. The company that we purchased the meters from, Flowbird, does come in and do some training for us. So we're working to create what that looks like for later this summer. In terms of the overnight parking system, it's just a matter, once the ordinance changes are made, it's a matter of staff working with PCI to set up the system. That will be a virtual permit system. And so it'll be very similar to now, if you use ParkMobile and you have your driver's license number in there, that's how it's checked. And so if you have a monthly permit, it'll have your driver's license number in there. If you are going to reserve it for a guest, you'll just need their driver's license, or license, I'm sorry, license plate, thank you, and put that into the system, and that is how it would be enforced. So we'll be working with PCI to get that set up. I am happy to answer any questions that you have on this this evening.
Thank you very, very much, Planner Anderson, I appreciate that. Questions from Commission? Commissioner Hoffman?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Christina. I just have a couple of questions. Well, the first is really not a question. And when I think about the benefit, the community benefit for weekend parking, Saturday and Sunday for our residents, specifically those that are closer to downtown, I think that's something we, I would love for us to reconsider and talk about a little more, because that could be a community benefit that could have a huge impact if it was stripped and we had people paying. So that was my first thing. Secondly, you said this would start downtown. Now, I'm thinking of Academy Street where we have affordable housing there and all they have is on-street parking. So would this eventually begin moving into the neighborhoods, potentially?
We have a few neighborhoods that have requested it. And so we are going to have it set up in downtown. We'll look and see how it goes, we'll manage, you know, figure out how it works, make any changes that we need, and then go out to neighborhoods to have that discussion of what it would look like in the neighborhood. And it doesn't need to match the exact system, right? It doesn't need to match the exact pricing. Downtown is a different location and has different demand levels than other neighborhoods. So I think there are a lot of opportunities there. There are other things that we need to think about for the neighborhoods, and that's the different level, the different enforcement mechanisms. So in downtown, parking is enforced through the parking system. Outside of downtown, it is enforced with Kalamazoo Department of Public Safety. And they're, you know, they have folks that do it. And so we, we have a few things that we would need to work out before we get there, but we would do it in conjunction with the neighborhood.
And so, just so I'm clear, there will be neighborhood discussions, because I know several people on Academy are on a fixed income and are already living in very affordable housing. And so to have this additional cost could be a cost burden to that household. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoffman. Other questions? Commissioner Prado?
Good evening. I know that Kelly Doyle was here earlier and I lifted up just some concerns for retailers who are really concerned over construction impacts, potentially impacting retailers already, and whether this could be another barrier. And I'll admit, my first inclination a while back when we were looking at this was the first feeling. But then, you know, just kind of realizing more of the way that downtown retailers are looking at it is more kind of, I guess, for lack of a better word, is like customer churn, if you will. And in the last couple of days, we've heard from a few, a decent number of retailers on the actual mall who have said, yes, we want this, which surprised me. Can you explain and go into that a little bit more about that and like how that makes business sense for them to have metered parking on the Kalamazoo Mall and those streets?
Sure, and I'll be sure to include a section from the Gibbs Planning Group that talks about this because I won't be able to do it the justice that.
I think it's really interesting, you know, I mean, like the rationale and the research that shows.
Yeah, I, well, there's several things. So there's one is you want to make sure that you are regulating parking, both timing and meters. There's a ratio or a percentage of parking that you want to be available at any given point in time. Because as someone drives down a street and sees no parking, oh, there's no parking, I, you know, I can't be here, right? And so when you think about always wanting to make sure that you're regulating in a way that there's, in most, in most blocks, in most cases, that there's something available. When you think about setting the time and the rate of parking, you also want to make sure that you're doing it, thinking about the types of businesses that exist along the corridor. So retail, coffee shops, you know, kind of quick visits, and making sure that you're setting the rates so those spaces, and doing proper enforcement so that those spaces do turn over and new customers can come in. You want to do all of this balancing it with your off-street parking, right? And giving other opportunities. So yes, you might walk farther if you choose a surface ramp or a parking ramp, but you will pay less, right? And so it's all about the time, you know, giving, thinking about the time that you're going to spend, your willingness to travel a distance and giving choices for, for those patrons. That combined with, there's actually a lot of parking management analysis and thinking about the number of spaces that ideally would be vacant at any given time, as well as the turnover. And, you know, there's been different studies on the value of a parking space. And there are different values associated based on its location, right? Adjacent to businesses, based on how it's used. And, you know, there's, I don't know that we always think of it that way, but when you think about the health of a, a commercial area and how it's used, there's a value to those spaces. And there's also a value to that parking area also being used for other things, not just for parking. There are studies that have been done on what if it's bike parking or what if it's a bike lane? And how does that help the area? There's also value based on those spaces as relates to, you know, doing pop-up parklets and those kind of things every now and then. So I think the point is, is that that space, which we think of as just kind of what's on the side of our vehicle lanes and may not have a value, actually has a value to creating that place and supporting those, especially in a commercial area, supporting those businesses.
Yeah, thank you for explaining that. But it does, does make a lot of sense, you know, they want to bring that churn of customers through for people who just want to come through and pop in quick to get something. The other thing I wanted to make sure to bring up as well, for the overnight parking, something that I don't frequently hear in this argument with this is that this is another tool to keep more people supporting downtown businesses, really, if you think about it. If it's really burdensome and hard to stay with your boo downtown overnight, or if you're visiting somebody from out of town, you're not going to do it, right? Or you might be less apt to do it. If we make it where it's, where it's convenient to do it and conducive to people visiting people that they want to come see, they're going to do that. And when they stay overnight, they're going to probably want to have breakfast somewhere or go grab a cup of coffee somewhere in the morning. So I think that's a really important part. But another one too is, I really think this is a tool that could help deter driving while under the influence, right? Where helping people find a way to make safe choices to remain parked versus if I'm worried that I'm going to get ticketed or towed because it's so hard to find a spot to stay overnight or for prolonged periods at night, you know, you might make a bad choice and get behind the wheel to move your vehicle. And so there might be, actually be, you know, impacts with that that we see as a community as well, with people making good choices of not driving while under the influence. The one thing I did want to ask a question about, question of you as well, if you don't mind, could you explain a little bit what is meant by the on-demand? So like when I hear that, I'm thinking to myself, kind of like, I heard recently like Wendy's is like changing a thing where it's like they're changing prices based on demand. So like, the price might be 99 cents because it's slow, and then if it gets busy, they'll charge more.
Sure.
But, but the thing, well, I was just going to say, like, that's what, first thing that comes to mind with that. And my worry is, is like, there's a lack of predictability. Like if, if the enforcement changes from day to day or time to time, so like one week it's enforced on Saturday, but then the next week it's not. Or if, if one hour it's $2, but then we jack it up to $5 because it's higher demand, it's hard for people to anticipate. So could you kind of help us understand a little bit more what's meant by that, like on-demand?
Sure, and I think we should clarify. So there is that system, right? For those that have been to, yeah, I'm going to misname the location, so I'm not going to say it. You could do a system where parking is based on the demand at the moment. Is it, you know, start of workday, end of workday, you know, happy hour, diners? We are not going down that road. It is something that was in the blueprint to think about and, you know, perhaps maybe, depending on what the event center looks like in the future, that's something we could consider. That's not what I'm talking about, so I apologize for creating confusion. What I was trying to express is that when you need, when you think about the time that meters or that you regulate parking, meters or no meters, if you regulate, the time that you regulate parking and the amount that you charge, you need to be thoughtful about the area that you're doing it in and the demand for that area. One of the things I mentioned before that the blueprint has noted is that we have streets with no meters that you would have active businesses on it that you would think, you know, might benefit from meters. We have streets with meters that are perhaps, you know, less active in downtown and, you know, do we need meters there or should we be thinking about pricing? And so I think what I am referring to is thinking about the location and thinking about how we set those meters, hours and rates accordingly. So we're hitting all those things that managing on-street parking can do for a commercial area. But thank you for providing that clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Prado. Other questions for Planner Anderson at this time? Vice Mayor Hess?
Thank you, Mayor. Christina, thank you for this lovely education. And for everyone else, what was, what was in the packet? The strategic blueprint and action plan was quite comprehensive and could often be confusing, like, oh my God, this is huge change. What you've done here tonight is kind of distill it down into reality. So thank you for that. A few things. Is there a plan for how to help people understand it? Are we going to use Good Marketing to put this part, the plan out and to help people understand and to take the fear away from change?
Sure, so there's going to be several things that are going to happen over the next couple of months. As I mentioned, we've been working with a subgroup of downtown businesses to think about the meters on the mall and where they're located. Excuse me. We'll continue to work with them. We will be at the July 9th, Southwest Michigan First Downtown Town Hall. Those are hosted quarterly. We've, we've been, we have a parking update almost every quarter that either myself or Rob Bajkalupi, who is our, our parking consultant, working between us and PCI, the management team, give presentations on where we are on all of this implementation work. And so we'll be meeting to discuss that on the, when we, we'll come to the meeting on the 9th to discuss that. We did work with Good Marketing, who's really focused on our streets for all work, but did help us draft up some of our, our press releases that we did last month. This got delayed a little bit, so they went out a little bit early, but they did help us write those. And internally, we will be working through what I mentioned earlier with the meters on the mall. We need to do education. We need to do a really good information campaign. We'll be using a variety of tools. We'll be going around to downtown businesses. We're quite fortunate now to be staffed with a downtown coordinator, who, and other economic部门staff that'll be helping us do this, walking around with information. We're going to be using some of those. I don't know if you've seen, I'm sure you've seen those signs that are on little pedestals. They, we've used them for 90 minutes free in the ramp this way. Right now, they're on the edge of the level bike lane for information on how to use the bike lane. We have those that we'll be putting next to the kiosks that talk about, you know, information on why this is happening and instructions on how to use them, reminding folks that there are other location choices like the ramp that might be 90 minutes free. So we'll be doing a lot of on-the-ground type of activities to make sure that users are aware of what's going on and when, as we, as we make those changes. Certainly, we'll be doing a similar process with downtown residential developments, management companies, to let them know of this opportunity.
Awesome. So with the mall, will we, will we be putting lines where people can park on the mall?
So those space, we don't, you don't need that, right? This is license plate system, so it's not, I parked in space one. It's your paid-to-park based, for a period of time, based on your license plate. The brick design does kind of lay out spaces in those little turnoff areas, in those little parking areas that help define them. But you don't need number spaces for this type of parking system. Some kiosks do.
But what about lines? I mean, somebody.
I will look into it, too.
Because there are some that can hold three cars and usually there's only two parked there because they're parked up.
Yeah, we can look at a way to think about how we designate spaces. I think painting over, well, I guess I won't speculate, I'll talk to our public services team.
Talk to the professionals. But, but during COVID, some, the green spaces were put on for like drive-by pickup. Are those going to go away around town?
Oh, for the pickup spaces?
Do we still have the curbside, so we'll still have the curbside spaces?
So the downtown blueprint talks about all of those things and helps us think through, you know, where do we want them? We recently added some on Michigan Avenue down on the east end, over by some pizza places for pickup. And we'll continue to look at what those, where those spaces should be. I do not believe there are any on the mall currently. Maybe there's one. I don't know about that, we'll see. I'll go out and look. I think we need to make sure that we're locating them thoughtfully.
Yeah.
I do appreciate the need for Uber Eats, other food delivery things, as well as just coming in for quick pickup.
Right.
But thinking through that, there's a task item to also think through where our accessible parking is located and making sure that it is spread out through downtown. So, you know, there's still work to be done as we kind of go off and tick through the, you know, the changes that the blueprint called for.
Super. Finally, can you, I know in the plan, they talked about upgrades to the ramps. Can you talk about how the ramps are going to increase lighting and cameras and so on to make them much more palatable?
So I do not have that specific information. I'm happy to provide it for you at the next meeting, if you are interested. I can say that it's important to make sure that our parking system is economically healthy so we can make those changes and make sure that we're continuing to manage those assets, which are expensive items to manage and not only keep in good condition, but keep comfortable for users. So I can get you that information for the next meeting.
Thank you, Christina.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hess. Other questions for Planner Anderson? Commissioner Wilson, yes?
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Christina. So once these changes are implemented, will there be some sort of continuous review to determine the efficacy? determine the efficacy of these changes as well as determine if adjustments are needed, you know, to kind of get to where we want it to go?
Yeah, absolutely. Right now, PCI, the manager, the operations firm over the parking system, as well as Mission North, who's our parking manager, kind of staff lead, monitor the system right now. What, how many, how are the spaces being used? What is our revenue in those, in all of those type of opportunities? We have in the past, and we could think about again, doing as needed monitoring on that turnover aspect. I mean, when you have a virtual system, you can kind of see how it works, but having some spot checks is also very helpful. When we did a strategic blueprint, we used Western Michigan University students to help us review parking and where it was being used and where it wasn't. So we have opportunities like that. But the parking system right now does and will continue to monitor the usage of the ramps, the surface lots, as well as the on-street parking, including pricing.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Any other questions from colleagues up here? All right, thank you so much. I appreciate your detailed responses and your presentation. Thank you, Planner Anderson. Now is the opportunity for anyone who's here in the chambers should like to comment on this item. If so, please come forward. You'll have three minutes. State your name and whether you live in a city.
Jeff Messer, city resident. Vice Mayor Hess made brief mention of using video cameras, which were recently installed in the Epic Center Ramp, as a, as a toll gateless means of use, for the parking ramps. Instead of having a gate and taking a ticket, the camera would just read your license plate. I do want to maybe discourage the city from becoming over-reliant on license plate reading. There's a This American Life, a public radio podcast and radio episode. I don't remember what it's called, but it's, maybe it's called Little Things or something. The prologue is about a guy, citizen journalist type, kind of like me, who came to notice that police officers and court officials and others in New York City were having fake license plates on their personal vehicles to avoid bridge tolls and, and similar things, congestion pricing. Those systems use video camera license plate reader systems, and the person brought it, you know, made public notice of it, and quietly, I guess, the New York Police Department got their officers to stop doing that. They never acknowledged that there was a problem, but, you know, the guy noticed that it was fixed. So, you know, if the city was to start becoming too over-reliant on license plate reader camera systems, you're just going to be encouraging people to not have, further encouraging people to not have license plates or to have fake license plates. And as I said, you can listen to that podcast for an example of where the public officials, police, firefighters, court officials, people who work in jails and stuff, official people were, had fake license plates, and they were getting away with it. So This American Life, again, I don't know, The Little Things might be the title, but, you know, don't become too over-reliant on any one technology. Always have some diversification in there because, you know, people are always going to take advantage of everything they can, and if you just turn everything over to technology, it's going to be a whole lot easier to, for people to get away with things for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that wants to comment on this item? See, no one. The recommended action is a motion to offer this for first reading. Is there a motion? Motion made by Commissioner Hoffman.
Second.
Supported by Vice Mayor Hess. Any further discussion, commissioners? Thank you. Clerk Borley, please call the roll.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. The motion passes. Next, reports in legislation. COO Lamb.
Thank you. I've got three quick things tonight. I can provide a very brief downtown restroom update with the promise to have more information coming. We are intending to install another Portland Lou behind City Hall, St. John and Level. We've had our city engineers prepare the kind of construction documents for the project. Next steps will be for that to go out to bid. I don't have a timeline on the bid just yet. That's the next step. And I do know that a second location is under review, but has not been finalized. So appreciate things always seem to take longer than you'd like them to. There has been good, consistent progress, great cooperation. Appreciate Director Baker and his team and Rebecca Kik of staying on this and trying to have some good viable solutions for us. Secondly, as you might have heard, really, really excited about the recent announcement of the RACE Grant, acronym-wise, Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity, grant award of $25 million. This was the largest of three grants that were announced in Michigan, and I just learned that City of Kalamazoo is the only city in the country to receive the Protect Grant and the RACE Grant. So this is significant, that the work that's happening in Kalamazoo, people are taking note. They believe in the vision, and they want to support implementation. I'd like to just give a couple of shout-outs to the incredible team that makes it happen. We've talked about Carolyn Williams and Amanda Dieters, our mighty but small grant team, certainly leading the charge. You've got George Waring, Dennis Randolph, Tom Palumbo from Public Services, Christina Anderson, Nolan Bergstrom from CPED, Neil Conway, Rebecca Kik from CMO. And I did want to give a shout-out to Anthony Ladd, although he has left the city to broaden his professional horizons. He had a major impact on this project, and we certainly want to thank him for that. Lastly, just a quick update. In terms of emergency purchase, we did have a lot of storm damage at the Millam Golf Course following the storm on the 16th. It has caused major problems with the course itself. So in order for us to be able to make sure that we had safe conditions, we had to get two quotes entered into an emergency purchase agreement with Tree Fellers in the amount of $84,000. The reason why I'm bringing that forward is that, you know, in emergency situations that affect health and safety of the city, city manager has the ability to go outside of standard procedures, but we do require the approval of the city attorney, the purchasing agent, and then we just need to bring it forward to you all for awareness. The dollar amount is under your threshold, it's just an FYI. With that, that will include my comments for tonight.
Thank you, COO Lamb. I appreciate that information. Commissioners, now is the time for commissioner comments. I do want to remind all of us and anyone who's watching or here in the chambers is that we do have a closed session on our agenda tonight, which has actually been a less-than-rare event, but we do have one scheduled. When it comes to closed sessions, just another reminder here is that when we go into closed session, we cannot literally take an action on that information in closed session. If we're going to take an action, we must come back into open session and take an action here in public. Sometimes when we're going into closed sessions, we know for a fact it's just informational. There will be no opportunity to take an action relative to the information that we're going to hear. And sometimes, there is an opportunity for us to take an action. So we're in a situation tonight where rather than adjourn the meeting and go to closed session, we will not be adjourning the meeting. We'll be going into closed session, and we will determine ourselves whether we want to take an action on the item that we're reviewing in closed session. But whether we do or not, we will still be coming back to adjourn the meeting here, even if we're not going to take an action. So we will not be adjourning the meeting prior to going into closed session, based on the possibility that we will, you know, may be taking an action, but we will most certainly be coming back for that. So that all said, now is an opportunity for commissioner comments. Commissioner Pradel.
To be a broker record, as I come back from a short bio break, but I am very curious about the status of the restrooms downtown, and I think it would be great to get an update about that as soon as possible. I remember.
We just got one.
Okay, sorry, Paul. And see, that's what happens when you, you have an emergency bio situation. But anyways, yeah, I, I think it would be nice to get that fuller, you know, update regarding to that, because that's where we left off with it. The other thing, I was just thinking about this over the weekend, but if I recall correctly, when we were in the midst of the pandemic, we were having virtual meetings, the social drinking district downtown was set to expire in August 2024. And so I believe that the way that that was designed is it was set to expire next month. And so I was just kind of curious about an update on that as well, just seeing where that is and if that's something that we're going to continue with or anticipate any changes with that. But I know that's been fairly popular, but I think that's a really good opportunity for us to do a check-in with public safety, with folks to see how that's been received and how that's doing. And then the third thing really quick as well is I just wanted to really just applaud Parks and Rec. If you haven't had a chance to drive by or experience it, South Side Park arguably, I think, is one of the coolest parks, according to my children, in the city of Kalamazoo. They just went under some pretty major renovations there, some new playground equipment, and my three young boys under nine years old give it a resounding thumbs up. And then Edison Neighborhood Association, this last weekend, brought back a really cool tradition. They used to do a bike parade in Edison Neighborhood, and they did it this weekend, and I was highly skeptical. I'm like, yeah, nobody's going to show up, you know, it rained this morning. That park was bumpin'. It was so cool. I bet you there were probably over, probably somewhere between 100 to 200 young people that showed up with bikes. Public Safety led the kids and the neighbors in a parade with their bikes around the neighborhood. They had food there, music, community resource tables and whatnot. So it was really neat to see South Side Park humming, and it's brand-new. If you haven't had a chance to check it out, please do. It's really an impressive place, and hats off to Edison Neighborhood Association as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Pradel. Other commissioner comments? Vice Mayor Hess.
Sure. Well, thank you, Jeff, and thank you, COO Lamb, for bringing up the EPS Foam Collection, because I'm just incredulous from its humble beginnings, from hope for creation, really wanting to start it, starting in talks with the city and then seeing it come to fruition and grow, and how now we're filling and overfilling a semi every quarter. Hopefully, we can maybe make it more frequent, frequent collection for that. So people are becoming aware of it. EPS does not degrade in the landfills, and so we definitely want to collect it and turn it into something useful. As COOLM also acknowledged, this is a difficult time for people involved with construction and businesses involved with the construction. And in my thought, community is really, truly having charge of this together. So while I may live in a part of the city that's not affected by construction, I know that my neighbors and my fellow citizens are running businesses that I can frequent, and I can take the time and I can make a conscious decision to go be there. Got some wonderful things and gifts at the Victorian Bakery the other day. Was able to do a shopping at the Park Street Market and then find my way around to Midtown Fresh. And I think that it's, that each of us has it within us to support our businesses and not to make a prejudgment about how hard it is to get there, because it's, I think, the signage, and I think we're doing a good job of making sure that people know how to get places. So thank you to those people doing that. And information is on our website, on the city website, about the construction and about how to get to certain businesses. And then also, today, just before I came here, Public Safety put out their electronic newsletter, which is full of great information about public safety, including an emergency preparedness kit that you can, a link to that that you can make. And given our weather as of late, I think it's important that we all be prepared for any emergencies that might happen. So just thank you for, to everyone for your patience, and let's all be prepared. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hess. Other comments, commissioners? Right, thank you. Just wanted to also mention a few things. Reasonably new business in downtown. It's not on one of the main drags. They're called Just Dessert, and it is dessert first, I'm sorry. It isn't just dessert. Actually, you can get sandwiches there as well. So dessert first. Well, I don't know if I'll necessarily recommend that, but it's certainly, if it's not first, second. So they're in the commercial space, which is now at the base of the Hilton Garden. Thank you so much. And just want to remind people, they're over there, trying to spread that little business district out a little bit, doing great work. I've been in there a couple of times and had the banana pudding, which I would recommend, which is really not quite dessert, in my estimation. That's actually.
Fruit salad.
Salad.
It's got banana.
Yeah, banana. It's, I mean, it was really a healthy dish.
Salad, definitely.
Also, I was over in one of our institutional downtown businesses, Sarkozy Bakery just today, and an effort that's come out of ECC, which is this kind of returnable takeout container, which I can't tell, tell you, I can't fully understand exactly how that's going to work. But there were some folks that are trying to get that started, this takeout, returnable container business, and they were in Sarkozy's to do a photo event on that. So look for that. I think that's an interesting idea. And I do, I appreciate that Kelly was here. I do have great concerns, and I hear concerns about our businesses, not just downtown, but our key, key businesses that we're so dependent on, not only for employment, but for particular services and products that are available. And I do really want to recognize that the whole, the family that, you know, has been solid there with Park Street Market, we went through several different grocery tenants there before they moved in, and they have been great hiring from the neighborhood, providing products that people desire to purchase in that neighborhood. And, I mean, we are literally now with all our work, and I know Director Baker was down there today trying to help figure that out, really boxing them off over there. But it's kind of a twofer. They also opened up in an empty space over here, Midtown Fresh, that is also their business, and now we are literally shutting down virtually every street around them. So that, I don't know how we can respond to that. We've had a discussion about that, COO Lamb, related to is there anything we can do other than trying to promote it, talk about it? I appreciate that. But I will say that we had what was described as a food desert on the north side without a grocery store over there, and so there's a real important gap. And I, I'm sorry to say, I think they probably are on the verge of or possibly laying off staff there because business has been reduced so much. So I guess I'll say, please support our community-based businesses. But I want to continue kind of a conversation about, is there anything additional we can help for those infrastructure, I mean, place-making, important, important businesses that we have in town? And that's the last thing we want to do, is we want to have, run those businesses out of business. And I know there's a lot of conversation about that, Victoria Bakery as well that's over there. And lastly, it was not so many years ago when we actually didn't have a grant writer as part of the city team or grant-writing staff. And, I mean, I know there's a lot of folks that come together with information to help these things cross the finish line, but if you want to look at a, a return on investment relative to those positions that we now have, it's going to be off the charts. There, you can't even measure the return on investment that has occurred relative to us being able to take advantage of bringing outside resources into town. So it's, no, it's a whole group effort, but I really, really want to say thank you to the city manager's office and thank you specifically to that team that brings that together. A grant writer may not necessarily be an expert in a particular area, but you can be an expert in putting these grants together, and we have that in-house. So I'm so thankful for that. So finally, on our agenda, we do have this closed session, and commissioners, to go into closed session, we need a motion. Is there such a motion? Motion made by Commissioner Hoffman.
Support.
Supported by Vice Mayor Hess. So we will be coming back one way or another to at least adjourn the meeting. But for now, we've got a motion in support to go into closed session, and we need to have a vote on that. Clerk Borley.
Commissioner Cooney.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes. Thank you, Clerk Borley. The motion passes, and we will be back in some period of time. The motion passes, and we will be back in some period of time.
So, my husband left the art hall yesterday. He said he sold his art house. Is it worth it?
Mm-hmm. I remember his tone, yeah.
All right. Nice to see everybody back here. So, we have a motion that will be read by our attorney Lial for us for action at this point. Attorney Lial.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. This commission is met in closed session to discuss pending litigation pursuant to the Michigan Open Meetings Act. Open Meetings Act. And at this time, I'm seeking a motion to approve a settlement agreement in the amount of $306,763.76. I'll repeat that again. $306,763.76 in the Lakeisha-McMillan versus City of Kalamazoo lawsuit. And additionally authorize a city attorney to sign the settlement agreement on behalf of the City of Kalamazoo.
Thank you, Attorney Lial. Is there a commissioner who would like to make that motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Pradel.
Second.
Supported by Vice Mayor Hess. Any discussion, commission? All right. See none? Clerk Brolin, please call her on.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney.
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. The motion passes. And now we're down for our last action of the evening. And that is to say, we love you, Kalamazoo. We are adjourned.